I think he can, he did the.
He did that.
No bueno.
I'm gonna skip him and go back.
Okay.
Mr. Loer?
Here.
Ms. Whitney?
Here.
All right, reading of statement of adequate notice, please.
Bones in. I'm gonna mark him present. Everybody okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
I mean, he's here.
Okay, notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act has been given as follows. Advertising in the Burlington County Times and the Carrier Post on January 30th, 2020. Sending a notice to the Burlington County Times and the Carrier Post on July 1st, 2020. And filing written notice with the Clerk of Delanco Township on July 1st, 2020.
Thank you, I need a motion and a second to approve the minutes of June 10th, 2020, regular meeting and executive session meeting.
Marissa, motion?
Rose, second.
Questions or comments?
Viridharma has a comment. I asked for the minutes to be amended because I find it very uneven that sometimes we have a lot of our back and forth included in the minutes and sometimes we have hardly any. And I think there was an important back and forth that happened in the last meeting that was not included. I did submit that to be included and I was told that that did not have to be accepted, which I understand, so I just want to give my reason for why I'm voting no to approve those minutes.
Not a problem, anyone else for comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No. I'm opposed.
Motion carries. All right, I need a motion and a second to accept the Secretary and Treasurer's report.
Mary able to vote for that?
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me again, Vicki?
I'm sorry, did Harry vote? Harry, can you hear us?
I don't think he can hear us yet.
I'm gonna put him as an extension.
Okay. That's not a problem. All right, I need a motion and a second to accept the reports of the Secretary and Treasurer for May 2020, which are agreement.
Steven, make a motion.
Cameron, second. Questions or comments?
Comments from Viridharma. Our packet was sixty-five pages, I printed out every page and tried to go through it. I still don't feel confident voting on sixty-five pages of information. I have a couple questions about the packet, should I give my questions now or wait till we do the Finance Committee report?
Well. What are your questions, Vera?
Well, I mean, I went through everything, I'm trying to learn, I don't feel, I don't like that I have to vote no on financial issues, I have to learn about them. I'm looking at the change in the Emergency Reserve Account, the subtotal for the Emergency Reserve Account, it says actual nine thousand three hundred and five thousand dollars approximately. And does that, is the Emergency Reserve Account for unexpected emergencies, say like the boiler blowing or something like that, is that what that's for, the Emergency Reserve Account?
I don't believe that's for Emergency Reserve, Vicki, can you shed a little bit more light on that?
I don't really know where she's looking and I could catch those questions before the meeting, it would give me time to actually know what she.
Well, it's, I mean, it's, it's very difficult to do this board packet because not every page is numbered. This one just says page three of eight. It could be attachment, gee, I'm not sure, I mean, I have it all spread out, I was looking at every single page. But it is the page having to do with recapitulation of budgeted fund balance, it's at the top, it says general fund. So, could you explain to me what is the Emergency Reserve Account for, just some basic information?
I can go over this with you, but I don't think that we should do this right now.
I agree a hundred percent, Vera, if you're more comfortable voting no on this, you can vote no on this. And at a later date, you can get together with Vicki and discuss it in person.
Okay, can I just ask the very simple question, which is, what is the Emergency Reserve Account for? Just a very simple question, what is that basically?
I don't know, I have to look into that further to answer your question.
Well, Phil, what is that for?
I really couldn't tell you what now, what it could be for, it could be for anything for, you know, that comes up that's an emergency, I don't know, there's a lot of different line items on everything, Vera. And without actually sitting down and looking at the budget, it's very hard to tell you exactly which one it is, that's why I suggest.
Like anything equipment related, right, just like if there's an equipment problem?
Equipment would come out of another fund, building equipment stuff would come out of, you know, a capital reserve fund, like we have for the boiler. There's a lot, there's a lot of different, you know, spots for money for different things and everything according to the way it's set up accounting wise has to be spelled out.
Oh, I got you, and also I would think we have insurance on some of our equipment, like if the boiler went, do we have insurance for that?
Well, we don't have insurance on the boiler, the boiler in the Walnut School is probably over twenty-five, well, in Walnut Street School, it's extremely old, but the two we have in Pearson, you know, they're getting to the point where if we have a failure with the boiler, nobody will provide insurance for like, for something like that.
We don't have any insurance on those boilers, that's not like a regular thing.
No.
Okay, all right, thank you, I'll have to, Vicki, at some point, we'll have to get together.
Yeah, what we're planning on doing, Vera, is probably next month, if we do go for the regular meeting, we'll have a pre-meeting where a lot of these questions can be asked instead of tying up everybody in the regular meeting with these questions.
Okay, very good.
Not a problem, thank you, any more questions or comments?
Oh, one more, sorry, this is not a detailed thing. I was on BeverlyCitySchool.org and their board packets, their expenditures are all online for the public. So are the board packets outside of confidential things that are labeled confidential, are the expenditures listed in the board packet public information that could be put online?
That's a real good question, I don't know how to answer that, you know?
Beverly has it all on there, anybody can go to BeverlyCitySchool.org and when they have meetings, their list of expenditures, it's all on there, now, of course, that doesn't include confidential things, I'm not talking about that. So, that's my recommendation that we also put that online.
Well, that's one of the other things, we can talk about it at a later date also, okay?
Okay, very good.
It is allowable, it is allowable, in fact, there are districts that include their packet without the confidential information, so Ms. Darmo, you are correct, that.
Can we vote on that to have that online, can we vote on that right now?
No, that's not what we're here to discuss right now, that would go under new business and also one of the committees will discuss it also.
Okay, so leave it till the end of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, very good, okay.
All right, any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, I am Viridharma.
Right, motion carries. All right, thank you, all, Community Liaison Report, do we have anyone here, oh, yes?
Can Harry hear us yet?
I do not believe so.
Appears to be frozen.
Question of his.
Oh, I told, I told him to look at his email so that he could call, learn how to call in, so I'm not sure if he, it's so hard to tell if he did that or not.
I have to put him down as he is abstaining, right?
Okay.
I don't know how, I can't.
I'll text him.
Okay.
He's not really here, I don't know.
Well, extension is fair, or he would be counted as absent up until this point, or until he's actually able to participate.
All right. Okay, moving on, do we have anyone from Delanco PTO here? I looked at participants, I didn't see anybody. I'm looking for hands up there at any spot, Cameron, do you see hands up?
No.
Okay, how about DICE or Recreation or Township Committee?
There are some Township Committee members present.
If they would like to say anything.
Ms. Holland is present.
Okay.
Doesn't look like anyone has anything to say.
Oh, Phil, I think, if I may, it's Vince.
Yes.
I think soccer is probably the only thing that's gonna try to go on, and I think signups are gonna end soon, so if anyone's still interested, I think they're still taking people in for all these levels.
Okay, great, Vince, okay. Moving on, welcome visitors, glad to see you all here, this is the part where I do my little president's message. It's been quite an interesting couple months with COVID and everything else, and we've all had to make a tremendous amount of changes and readaptations and everything. If you recall, this has probably been one of our hardest financial years that we've had in a long time. We had to raise taxes five point five six cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. Now, that was pretty well a bare bones budget, and if anybody's been coming to these meetings for a while, you've heard me get on my little rant about special ed and how it costs us a tremendous amount of money. Now, I'm not saying that, you know, people that have children that have the need special education, I'm all for seeing them get the best help they can. But in a small school district like Delanco, between special ed out of district costs and transportation costs, it's been putting a tremendous hurt on our district. Now, they've got the new sixty-four units by the railroad tracks, that got developed, and it's no fault of anybody's that, you know, it's cost us, you know, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, but we've had to make adjustments for it. We've made a tremendous amount of adjustments, but the state has just notified us, and they did that on July 10th, that they're cutting a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars more from our budget. Well, that hundred and fifteen thousand, we've already cut quite a few things to the bone. How do we turn around and get that back? We're looking at, we had a meeting Monday night, and we're looking at quite a few different options, you know, from water fountains, or not the water fountains, the water that we provide for the teachers to drink, you know, stipends, athletic stipends, because with COVID, it doesn't look like we're gonna have any athletics happening with the school districts. Your transportation, we can save twenty-five thousand dollars by looking at our lease purchase. We had one student who did move out of district, which is gonna save us thirty-seven thousand, but that's no guarantee that we won't get another student. The online math curriculum, thirty-eight hundred, bottled water, like I say, that was about a thousand. You know, travel for out of district, we cut that, that was seven thousand dollars, we have been looking at everything. Now, here's an extra wrench into the works. We make about fifty thousand dollars off of X Care. With the coronavirus, is X Care even going to be a viable option? If not, that's gonna put us about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in the hole. One of the hardest things to do is to cut things from your budget. We've already had some reductions in force, which is extremely difficult and it affects everyone. One of the things you'll see a little bit later on tonight's budget is a resignation of a teacher, because we had to do a reduction in force. The state says to us that we've gotta have that particular teacher. You know, and it's, folks, it's getting very difficult out there to try to make ends meet. It's putting a little stranglehold on all these small districts year after year. What I encourage everyone to do is call your state senators, call your state assemblymen, you've got, you know, everyone out there, make noise, because it's only gonna get harder. We wanted to bring Chromebooks down to more students this year. That's not happening, you know, kids today use a computer for everything. I mean, you'll see a five, six-year-old, seven-year-old, they know their way around a computer better than mom and dad. We couldn't do that because we don't have the finances. I don't wanna see it get to a position where we have to riff anyone, but it's getting very hard out there. So please, folks, if you have a chance to call your assemblyman, your state senators in the state, something has to be done with special education funding, because the small schools are dying a slow death. Anyhow, that's enough of my rant right now, tonight, I'll get moving on with everything else here. Obviously, student recognition, we have nothing because we don't have any students now. I'm going to open this to public comment on agenda items. Okay, anybody put their hand up or anything to say there?
Nothing in the chat, yeah, give them a second to type.
Give a second here.
I believe a member of the public asked where they could find a copy of the yearly budget breakdown for the school district, Joe or Vicki, I don't know if that's a question you're able to answer?
Yeah, we have it on the website. If you, if you look under Budget Resources on the website, the presentation for 2021 is on there, the workshop information's on there, the user-friendly budget is on there, so I would, this is just general info for anybody, I would direct you to our website.
I'm gonna see them on.
Resources, and there are a few files there. Courtesy of.
I'll call you. I hope you'll be safe.
You keep following that, you don't have to follow what I'm actually doing.
I'm, Cameron's sitting here working with the computer, okay, obviously, we have no other comment from the public on agenda items. I'll turn it over to Mr. Mercinger for Superintendent's Report, Joe.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jenkins. A motion is requested to approve the following. Superintendent's report submitted by me, Principal's report submitted by Lou Conti, and then fire and emergency drills for June 2020, we did not conduct drills, we conducted zero drills during the closure. In fact, I'm gonna be doing a training tomorrow related to school security drills under the current circumstances. We have a pupil welfare report there, which you can read the numbers. And we're also, I'm also asking for approval of Therese Raffinello, who is our school nurse at Walnut, to serve as the mentor for Alyssa De La Peña, who is the school nurse at Beverly for the fall semester. And we also have a couple of NJ DOE required items. Each year, we annually adopt our evaluation model, so for teachers, it's Danielson, and for principals, it's Marshall, that's been the case for a number of years. That's not anything new or different, so, yes, a motion is requested for items A through F.
Need a motion and a second, folks.
Marissa will make a motion.
Vince, I'll second.
Okay, questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Mercinger.
Thank you.
Instruction and Program Committee Report, this is Whitney.
There's no report at this time.
All right, thank you very much, Mrs. Whitney. Finance Committee Report, Mrs. Gonteski.
Yes, I make a motion to approve items A through Q as listed on the agenda, with just pointing out as a piggyback to your president's message, items F through L are all special education contracts with the amounts specified for various students to show what those costs really do to our district.
Second?
Marissa, a little second.
All right, questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Yes?
Um, so, yes, so the tuition for these special education placements, the contract was for the period of starting July 6th. Today is July 15th, so why wasn't this, these items on last month's agenda?
Because we didn't have the contracts then.
So, if they already started July 6th, it doesn't matter, the vote doesn't matter at this point?
Typically, the contracts always go on after the student's already been placed there.
So, we couldn't have voted on this in June, you're saying?
We didn't.
Possible.
We didn't contract that.
Okay, my other comment is sixty-one thousand four hundred and twenty per student, that's for one, two, three, four students. Three of them needed an aid, thirty-five thousand seven hundred dollars. My question is, these tuitions are much more expensive than the Burlington County Special Services District, which we also have some students going there. And that district services many different classifications, it was set up for them, even the most severely handicapped. Why are these students not going there?
Because they have IEPs and whatever it specifies in an IEP, it might be something that Burlington County special school districts can't handle, that's why they're going to Kingsway or another school.
So, is that, is that the case, that their IEPs?
We talked about student specifics in our meeting.
Yeah, we, I was gonna say, Ms. Darmo, I appreciate your question, but I think we're entering the realm of talking about specific students and identifiable information, once we say,
Okay.
why is that student placed there?
So, I understand.
Needs and.
I can't, I cannot vote, I cannot vote to approve this unless I knew more like in an executive session, if we could talk about it so we could protect confidentiality.
We can't even talk executive session about the students, Mrs. Darmo. This is something that we have no say on, this is something that they have, that's where they have to go to school, we can't discuss, we can't say, oh, we'd like to send them to this school or that school to save money, we don't have a say on.
Okay, so I just want to be clear, because they're included here, it means their IEP only allows them to be sent to this school, not the other one.
That's not what we stated, we stated that there are different needs for each student, for each family, we have, we have parents that we work with, we have other districts that we work with, and we place students in programs that are appropriate for them and their IEP. This is not to say that we wouldn't change placement for students as needed if, if we felt that that was necessary. The child study team does not necessarily say, well, the board doesn't like this placement, so now we're going to change the placement, that's not how a child study team operates.
I have to mention that sometimes at certain schools, like if you're gonna use special services as an example, the program that they offer for what possibly this, this individual they need might be full, but we have to find it elsewhere.
These, these tuition rates, this is unsustainable for our township, that's what I want to say about this.
That's what I've been saying for the past.
Agreed, Vera.
We've all been saying that.
We've all been saying that, Vera.
That's.
It's been out of, it's out of our hands.
There's a lot of factors that go into this that are outside our control, which I'll just echo Phil's comment. This is why people have to call their state legislatures and say, you know, you need to tackle this issue, because for small districts, I mean, Delanco's a middle-class community in most part. We're gonna get, we're gonna get whacked even more, I'm telling you, we're gonna get whacked even more with this. And, and the option is, is that we're gonna have to raise taxes every year to the maximum amount that we're allowed, and we're gonna have to make substantial cuts, because that's the only way we're gonna be able to stay afloat.
I'm not, I'm not confident. I mean, you're, what you're basically saying is there's no way for me to oversee that our money is used in the most effective way possible because of all of these confidential IEPs, and I, I can't be involved in that, I don't know if we're getting the best bang for our buck, it's too bad for me, so I, I have to vote no on this.
I don't believe it's our job to.
It's not our, see that, that is correct, it's not our job.
Yeah, Vera, I just wanna, I just wanna state, this was a question that a lot of, including myself, a lot of new board members have when they get, when, when they see these tuition contracts. It's, 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 it's an eye shocker. Really, the state does not give the local boards control. And we don't, we really are just, this is really just a formality, really, is this vote.
So what's to keep this, this learning center from going from sixty-one thousand to one hundred thousand? What's to keep them from doing that? Nothing?
Ms. Darmo, I think that's a much larger issue that affects every district in the state, just like Mr. Jenkins is saying, that special education funding is a big issue, special education costs in general are a big issue, but no matter what, the IEPs are written as they are, and yes, changes in placement do occur, but that, that's not something that suddenly happens because a board member says, well, we are questioning the placement. It happens through a process that the child study team goes through, so.
I'm gonna have to go and research this through my contacts before I can be comfortable voting yes or no, otherwise, don't put it for me to vote on. If, you know, if you're saying there's legally no choice for me, don't put it for me to vote on. Otherwise, I'm gonna vote no for it.
You'll have to vote.
We have to.
You know, it has to go towards us and we have to approve it. I really wish the state would pick up all special education costs, and then we have a fair amount of money to give, to spend more money for more teachers, to spend more money on, you know, Chromebooks, to be able to give the kids the education that we all want them to have. But unfortunately, the state isn't picking up the tab, and I'm sorry, I'm a firm believer that the state should be taking care of more special education, then we would have money to spend on our children in our schools. Okay, anyhow, moving on, I'm sorry, I got on a little bit of rant there.
You were on question.
Questions or comments, all those in favor?
Hold on, hold on.
Go ahead.
I had one more comment, Vicki, just in case you didn't see, because Stephen was on mute when we did the Superintendent's Report, he did vote yes, because I saw him mouth yes.
I'm on video now, Kristy, I can't talk. Sorry about that.
I got you.
I'm sorry, Cameron.
On, during, when we voted for Joe Superintendent's report, Stephen was muted for some reason, but when we did the vote, I did see him mouth yes over the video chat, so I just wanted to confirm that we got that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm gonna have to do my thing where I do it by item, so whenever you're ready for that.
One second.
One second, Vicki will be ready in a minute.
Okay.
Okay, so, A and B, no, C through F, yes. G through J, no. K through KL, yes. And, hold on one second. MN, no. OP. OP, yes, and Q, no.
I would like to repeat that.
Okay.
AB, no. C through F as in Frank, yes. G through J, no. K through L, yes. M through N, no. O through P, yes, and Q, no.
Um, that's correct.
All right, and motion carries. Thank you, Rose. Operation Facilities Committee Report, Mr. Calligwar.
Thank you, sir. Give one moment, bring up my report, please.
Problem.
Okay, for the month of June, for Operations and Facilities Committee, routine maintenance activities, school is closed due to coronavirus, obviously. No more in a wee whack in for both schools, summer cleaning started at Pearson. Special project activities, grease to change all belts on rooftop exhaust fans at both, at both schools. And I saw him doing that, busy there. Change exhaust fan motor and bearings in room nine at Pearson. Cleaning greased all unit vents at both schools. That's better. Turn the coat shelves around in one kindergarten classroom and painted them. Replaced all broken and missing floor tiles that were under the shelf. Prepared gym floor at Walnut to get it ready to be finished, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Calligwar. Policy Committee Report, Mr. Litwack, he doesn't have a policy report, so.
I'm, I'm on the committee, can I say something?
You're on the policy committee?
Yeah, it's a procedural thing. Who is the individual that sets the time for the meetings? Is that the board president, or is that the committee head, or who does that?
Usually, it's myself.
Okay, so when is the date you're setting for that meeting, because we have had no meetings on policy?
We haven't had, Mr. Mercinger and I discuss things on a regular basis, and we haven't come up, and obviously with COVID, it's very hard to have.
Well, in the last agenda, it said that the policy committee would meet in July, so could you give us a date?
That's, Ms. Darmo, that's the plan, however, when we talked about that in June, we had not received the code back on June 26th from the Department of Education when it comes to reopening schools, so basically ninety-nine percent of our efforts, at least that, are going toward reopening our schools, now, that doesn't mean policies are unimportant, and in fact, we're going to need to put policies in place for reopening schools that are different based on the guidance that we're receiving. But no matter what, I mean, I would still like to have that meeting, it's just a question of when can we do it? And it is an excellent question, it's just, we've tied up with other tasks.
Well, I think it's just Harry and me on the committee, so I can just give him a call on the phone tomorrow and discuss non-COVID policy, just to get started.
What I would do is I, I have the Strauss-Espine up. So what I would do is I, I have the Strauss Esme update. There are policy management company that, that they've been working with us for many years. Uh, I share that with the policy committee and we discuss those updates. A lot of them are routine updates. Some of them are more extensive updates that, that, um, are unexpected because of new laws, that type of thing.
So you're not setting a date, in other words?
I'm not setting a date tonight simply because, uh, I am preparing five separate meetings for reopening. Including a meeting that took place tonight, as well as four more meetings over the coming weeks, uh, that. Truly take precedent right now when it comes to reopening. Again, that doesn't mean policies are unimportant. It just means that. Certain, uh, certain topics that we would typically discuss are on the back burner because of that.
I understand. I could always talk to him informally.
Yes, you can, and you can talk to any board member informally. That's no problem whatsoever.
Just, just a point, sorry, uh, sorry, just a point of clarification, a minor point that was made. Um, I'm, there, I'm also on the policy committee, like, of who sets the meeting dates. Uh, and Joe, correct me if I'm wrong. Thought it was the, the, the chairs of the, of the subcommittees. In coordination with you.
So it's me?
It's not the president. The pre- the president is a member of all committees and has the right to attend. Those subcommittee meetings, but it is the chair of the subcommittee meetings. In coordination with the superintendent that sets the meeting.
Yes, and then Phil and I discussed that as well, because Phil is typically involved in every committee meeting because of. Yeah, that's, you know, he's, it's called, he's called an ex officio committee member, because even though he's not on the committee, he's the president, like you said, he's entitled. So Phil and I talk about dates as well, so yes, it's, it's really a combination of. You know, me discussing dates with the chair, discussing dates with the president, and the committee members, and coming up with something that makes sense for everyone.
Correct. I just wanted, I just wanted that because I, I didn't want. Board members to be confused and think that we have to wait for the president to set a date for a meeting. It, no, it's, it's. You, you know, usually if there's no topic to discuss, there's no meeting anyway. Um, and especially if the chair feels that there's no topic to discuss, there's no meeting. But I, I just wanted to make that point real quick, sorry.
Uh, thank you, Stephen. Okay, moving on, uh. Uh, thank you, Mr. Litwack, even though you can't hear us, Harry. Uh, personal committee report, Mr. Cameron Jenkins.
Uh, I will make a motion to approve the following. A, Sandy Fleming Stein to perform summer work related to her responsibilities as the speech language pathologist at a rate of fifty-five dollars per hour. For up to twenty hours. B, the appointment of Linda Guckin as the virtual home instruction teacher for a grade six student. Incoming grade seven student for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. At the D T E A rate of fifty-five dollars per hour for seventy-two hours of instruction with a start date of July first, twenty twenty. C, the resignation of Joyja, Jascolka Frye, ESL teacher, effective six thirty twenty. D, the resignation of Katerina Galvich, Spanish teacher, effective six thirty twenty. And E, the non-teaching substitute list, uh, on the board packet, and I will make the motion.
I will second it, Marissa will second it, sorry.
Okay, questions or comments?
Um, and Vera Dharma, I want to say so, a big thank you to Katerina Galvich. My daughters had her for Spanish, the, and I, I really appreciate all her years of teaching in Delanco and best of luck to her.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I would, uh, also like to thank Senora Galvich for doing an excellent job of teaching me in the Delanco schools as well.
I agree. She's phenomenal. Alexa was able to take, I think it was Spanish five and qualify for, like, um. I think it was a special accommodation on her diploma for, um, Spanish due to that.
She's. Yeah, I'll, I'll also echo those sentiments. She's, she actually, I believe she started when I was in middle school and she was, she was really great. So I wish her, do wish her the best.
I understand. Here, here, as superintendent, I, I agree a hundred percent with everything being said about Katerina Galvich. Uh, she's a fantastic person, an excellent teacher, and, uh, my very first classroom that I ever visited in Delanco. Was her classroom, uh, and it, you know, it was always a welcoming place, uh, filled with energy, so, you know, I. Katerina will definitely be missed here as a teacher and, and we wish her the best, uh, in her future.
So true, and this is a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Calligwar.
I vote yes.
Ms. Dharma.
Yes.
Ms. Gunteski.
Yes.
Mr. Cameron Jenkins.
Yes.
Mr. Phil Jenkins.
Yes.
Ms. Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. Litwack. Not present. Mr. Whit.
Yes.
Ms. Whitney?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Thank you very much, Cameron. Uh, Board Liaison Reports, Riverside, Mrs. Gunteski, do you have anything for us?
Um, I just wanted to share, um, with other members of the board, and I know, um, Mr. Mercinger sent out an email. Um, about being on the reopening committee, but I just wanted to share that I am also on the reopening committee for Riverside. Uh, we had our first committee meeting on Monday. Um, a lot of information is going out in the back. Talking around and discussed, um, and it's, it's a work in progress. Um, so there, and once we know more of what's going on, it will certainly be shared.
Right, thank you very much, Rose, appreciate it. Uh, New Jersey School Board and Burlington County School Board Association, Mr. Litwack isn't here. Or Harry, can you hear us this time? I don't believe he can. All right, thank you anyhow, Harry. Uh, Township Committee, obviously, I haven't had a chance to make any. Meetings because I've had other meetings going on at the same time. I know the township is. Working like crazy also, you know, they're in the same predicament we are. I'm hoping maybe come next month's meeting, we will be able to have it an actual in-person meeting, of course, with limits on people, but we shall see. All right, do we have anything for old business? Okay, nothing for old business. Uh, for new business, board self-evaluation is available. We have to do that soon. Um, also, depending on whether we go with a real meeting next month or a virtual meeting. We will have a pre-meeting at six P M., which is gonna be very similar to what. Rose does in Riverside and what I did in Riverside, and it's a good way of going over the agenda and things, so we're not. Talking about things that could bore the public or have no bearing upon the actual meeting, so it's a good idea to get started with that. Um, does anything, anybody have anything else for new business?
Vera Dharma, um, like I said at the beginning, I would like to have the non-confidential. Parts of the board packet online, uh, like they do in Beverly. Can we agree on that?
Well, we're not gonna agree on something right away. What we can do is we will talk about it. And we can talk about it in executive session, or we can talk about it in the pre-meeting, and then Mr. Mercinger will be the one making the final decision on that.
Yeah, and I think, I think, um, Phil, you know, I want the board to. At least come to some kind of consensus because it is an allowable action, and as long as we're not including confidential information. Uh, you know, I, 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 I would actually not oppose it. However, the packet as it is today. Has plenty of confidential information, and that's why it, it's, it could not be released right now. Um, so we would basically need to say, what are we actually going to include in our board packet that can be released? And what can't, you know, so it is a discussion process. It's not, like you're saying, it, we can't just suddenly decide tonight. Mr. President, under new business, I wanted to share, uh, similar to what Mrs. Gunteski just shared. That, uh, we had our first meeting, uh, of the reopening committee. Tonight, uh, we spent about an hour and a half together talking about various topics, and, uh, I had sent an email today. Just letting families know. I, I know that there are questions about what the plan looks like for twenty twenty-one. Uh, however, the, the plan is still being developed. It is not yet finalized, and if I were to, to discuss details right now. I really think that it would create misinformation and confusion amongst many people, so. Our plan will be finalized over the coming weeks. And the, the target date to share with families is August third. Because that is in line with what the state recommends, that we provide it four weeks ahead of time. Uh, I know some districts have moved much faster, you know, and I applaud them for that, however. Uh, you know, I, I think that in this situation, the race is not necessarily to the swift. I think this is a slow and steady situation where, where you need to. Be looking at the landscape and understanding what's happening, and I certainly don't want to rush a plan into place. That's not going to keep everyone safe and provide the best education we can, so it, it is a deliberate. Slower process than what some other districts are doing, and, and that's on purpose. So I, I appreciate the, the time to explain that because I know that there could be many questions or comments about that topic.
Um, I see that Greta Gareth has to, um, a chat comment. We have to be monitoring, monitoring.
We're not there yet, Vera.
Okay.
All right, anything else for new business?
I, I just, I, I'm sorry.
No, go for it, Stephen.
No, I just wanted to real quick mention, um, just real, real quick, uh, the Delanca Recreation Commission, the Delanca Police Department. And, uh, the Delanca School District, um. Will be partnering on, and, uh, for next year sometime, an educational program in regards to, uh, water safety. Um, as everyone knows, on Father's Day weekend, um, there was a tragedy at the river. Um, a gentleman did, did drown, um, so that a, a, a lot of township officials thought it was prudent that we, we, we. We have to offer our kids something in regards to educating them about the dangers, uh, that aren't necessarily visible to the eye about. You know, the waters that surround Delanco. I mean, we are a waterfront community. People are going to continue to enjoy. Um, you know, the river and the creek and the other water areas, but we need to definitely alert them, uh, to the danger, so. Uh, the Recreation Commission will be discussing it at the next meeting. Um, Joe, thank you very much for, uh, getting back. And the willingness to, to partner with the commission and the police department. Um, and it's still, you know, we're still formulating exactly what this education, uh, program will be. Um, you know, because especially with COVID, it may not just be an assembly. Um, but we'll definitely keep the board updated on this. I just wanted to mention that and, uh, say thank you to Joe for, uh. For willingness to partner, uh, with the commission and the police department on this.
Thank you, Mr. Laura, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Stephen.
This is Cameron. I just have a quick note for our meeting for August nineteenth. I won't be.
Like, a- apart from personnel and, and pl- and placements of students, like. Anything to do with, uh, non, like, anything to do with, like, just operating the school, say. Boilers and paying for gas and this and that, that's not confidential.
Not confidential.
Correct, okay.
All right, um, we had another question from a guest. Will you be taking public comment on COVID planning? Um, I'm presuming that has to do with the opening of the school, and there was a meeting previous to this. There's gonna be the next meeting, which my son. Mentioned he wouldn't be able to attend, so I know.
No, 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 I said I wouldn't make the Board of Education.
Oh, the Board of Education meeting, correct, yes. So, you know, there is public that is already involved. Joe, I think you can explain a little bit better. Who's involved in that committee?
We have, uh, we have twenty-five individuals involved in that committee, including. Uh, teachers, other staff members, administrators, parents, board members. Uh, so I think we really have a lot of different perspectives. Now, that doesn't mean that individuals couldn't share. Questions or comments with me individually through email or, or something of that nature, but at this time, um, you know, we're receiving a lot of. I mean, we, I explained to the committee that. We have guidance from the Department of Education called the Road Back. I have reviewed that document twice. I've met with my colleagues about it numerous times over the past few weeks. Uh, we also have our board solicitor who provides information to us based on the legal interpretation of what we should be doing. We have Strauss Esme for policy management. They're helping us with that. Uh, we have the New Jersey Department of Health and the Burlington County Health Department that are providing guidance. So we are receiving, uh, a tremendous amount of guidance from many different areas, uh, to develop the plan. In addition to the survey that was put out to families, as well as all the feedback that we're gonna be getting from the committee. So, yeah, I mean, I, I welcome comments about it, but, but as I said, you know, I, I, I'm not really able to answer questions. And say, here's what we're doing for fill in the blank, because, uh, nothing is finalized, so. I, if, if, you know, if the president is willing to hear comments about that topic, I, I'm not opposed. It's just a matter of, I can't really comment. And I can't give any definitive answer to, to what we're doing at this stage.
Not to mention, we might spend a month or longer going through everything, and then the state might come through and change everything, so. It, it's a work in progress. We'll have to see. Um, Greta Garth asked.
Yeah, yeah. For G- for Greta, Mr. Jenkins, um, I actually met with Greta and, and a, a local group called Delanco Mutual Aid. I, I did not want, I didn't want to neglect to mention this, although I have talked to the board about it as well. But for the, the sake of the public, I have met with that group virtually. Uh, it is a group that is. Uh, part of the Black Lives Matter movement and part of a mo- a greater movement to increase diversity, equity. And, and similar topics in, in schools and in the police force and ve- various other areas of our society, so. I applaud them for what they're doing and I've met with them, and so, uh, what I can say to Greta right now. Uh, is that we can add the Delanco Mutual Aid to our distribution list so that you're aware of when board meetings are and, and things like that. That, that's a very easy thing. I, I added it to my notes just now.
All right, she did say thank you, and, all right, uh, did, 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 hold on. Jennifer Deering, an email to the district on staffing changes. It stated Mercinger would be heading special education K through eight. What does that entail and what qualifications does he have to assume that role?
I, I think that we, we discussed that topic at length last meeting, and I, I would ask the board to, uh, to, um. Sit to, a- at this, at this stage, say, you know, we, we appreciate that question, uh, however, I, you know, I. I, 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 I would prefer not to continue going over that topic since it was discussed at length last month.
I can understand that, you know, mercy or not a problem.
So I was unable to attend the last meeting due to scheduling conflicts, so I was not privy to that conversation. So I was just asking maybe for a recap of that topic.
Uh, Mi- Mrs. Deering, I appreciate your question, but at the time of that meeting, I also stated then that, uh. Uh, it, it is not appropriate for the board to undergo questioning. Or for administrators to undergo questioning during the public comment section, and in my view, there are some questions. That are very easy to answer because they are questions to clarify for the group of, you know, what's. Website or whatever, but when it's a question of what are Mr. Mercinger's qualifications, I, I really. I asked the board to put a stop to that last month. Uh, this is my seventh year in the district. I believe I am. Position out there, and that's, that's what I stated then as well.
No, I'm understanding that, but, so what does the role entail when it says heading up special education?
Well, Mrs. Deering, I'm not gonna engage in a debate or discussion about this topic.
He is our super.
Are the, are the board meetings, are the minutes from last board specifically in regards to those conversations available to the public?
They will be after tonight. We just voted on them at the beginning of the meeting.
Right, so after tonight. So you would be able to go oversee them then, all right, Jen?
Yeah, but I'm saying, so you're saying that it was discussed in length at the last meeting. Are those minutes in, like, verbatim in the minute? Like, are they available to the public?
Deering, and in fact, it should not have been discussed at last meeting, but it was, and that's why I'm saying that I. I believe that this kind of line of questioning is not fair to me as a person, as someone with nineteen years of experience in public education. Having to defend what I'm able to do and not able to do for our school district during my seventh year. So that, you know, it's just something that, that I stated last month. It is not a personal matter for you or anyone else. Uh, I just think that staff members should not be put on trial that way, whether it's what happened last month with other staff members too. So I just, I, I think that that's, that's the extent of, of how much I would discuss it.
I think you're taking this as a personal attack on you and, but, I mean, every teacher and every administrator has to have degrees. And qualifications in order to deal with certain aspects of education. Special education teachers have to have a degree in special education. So I'm asking, you put that statement out there for the district and for the parents, that you're gonna be in charge of special education. But there's no elaboration on that. What does that mean?
I would, I, I, I would, um, again, just state that I'm not gonna debate or discuss this topic with anyone during the board meeting. Mrs. Deering, you.
So how do we discuss this if it's not during a board meeting?
You have my email address and you have emailed me about other topics. There is.
I have.
Why we couldn't discuss this in any other format. Uh, again, I, I, I will not engage in a debate or discussion about. This topic or other similar topic.
We, when I write you emails, I get very generic statements and replies, so. That is why I'm asking this in the board meeting, because I do not get responses either. I've asked you very few questions over email. They've been in regards to district topics that need clarification, and I always. district topics that need clarification, and I always get a very standard, generic, vague reply. So if I sent you an email on this, would I still get a standard, generic, vague reply?
Uh, I believe, like, as I said a few minutes ago, I I will not discuss or debate this topic with you during the board meeting.
So we can discuss this in private?
I would be happy to meet with you or have a virtual meeting, and in fact, I offered that a few months ago when you had a number of questions.
That was in regards to a different matter.
And we did not set it up.
Because that was in regards to a different matter, one in which you misunderstood my comments, and so I'm just saying.
Again, I I don't wish to debate or discuss it in the board meeting.
Great, I will send you an email to schedule a time to have a private call.
Thank you, Jennifer. Joe is our superintendent, he is basically in charge of everything, and we could just leave it at that. Does anyone else in the public have any questions?
Greta Gareth wants to know how to get on the blackboard email.
Vera, we already addressed that, please.
For blackboard, I don't think.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Alright, um, from guest, will I should, will we share his resume? No, we will not. Yeah, now.
Although I'm very proud of my resume, to be quite honest with everyone here, I I'm quite proud, but that's not an appropriate thing for us to do for any staff member, myself included.
Alright, is there any other questions?
Phil, can I make some comments? I apologize.
Sure, Eric, not a problem.
Go ahead, no worries. Um, to piggyback on a couple of things that you had said, Phil, and uh, kind of put in my two cents as a a high school administrator, athletic director. You mentioned, uh, you know, potentially some of those cuts for the hundred and fifteen thousand dollar budget cut that the state just recently kind of put on, not just Delanco, but every school district, we're dealing with it as well, and where I work. Um, I I could tell you as one of the top three people in the middle school league that um, Delanco also participates in, I I help do the schedule and and run that league. Eight middle schools have already pulled the plug completely on middle school athletics. I think the league likely is going to end up pulling the plug. Um, you know, it's not to mention high school athletics with the NJSI pushing things back to uh, the beginning of September, which is a full month back from the beginning of practices, and then beginning of October. I think they're buying time until the the districts uh put in their uh, reopening plans, just like Joe was saying earlier. Um, plus, I I'm hearing that Burlington County might be putting regulations on this on an entirety anyway, so that that whole thing could kind of be a moot point and pulled um, to begin with, just kind of due to the COVID situation, you know. Um, and and to even just to comment on the special ed funding and everything that that everybody's kind of been going back on. Uh, that's special ed funding and tuition rates, they they cost every district a significant amount of money. Um, you know, I I agree, we definitely need to be contacting legislators, senators, but uh, on it, on a separate point, as the chief school administrator, Joe, really, um, yeah, I don't think we should necessarily be judging like, oh, what's his qualification, what's this? We can all see on the agenda that the, that some of this is costing us a significant amount of money. Some of this obviously are are very, very uh, you know, legit, and these kids definitely need these services, right? Um, but at the same time, maybe Joe is the chief school administrator, dare I say, is taking over special ed to kind of evaluate that and see what services we could potentially offer and reevaluate some of that money.
Oh.
So let's kind of start thinking outside the box here, and I'm kind of speaking to Joe Q Public in a sense, and saying that, yeah, let's give this a chance to play out here a little bit.
In in actuality, we have been looking at other ways that we can save money. We were at about ten percent of our budget, about a million dollars, and our budget is about ten million dollars. Now it's up to about thirteen, almost fourteen percent. That's why it's having such a large effect on us. We have looked at different ways of how we could turn and start bringing certain special education back into the district. But with some of these children, and you know, i- i- if I was a parent of a child that needed special ed help, I'd want the very best, and so would every parent out there. I understand that.
Absolutely.
You know, one of the things that is, it's it's totally killing the small districts. If you're a, you know, an Evesham School District or Mount Laurel or, you know, part of the Lenape, you know, I mean, you can turn around and have classes, and it wa- isn't a problem. In Delanco, because we're such a small district, it's taking away from the education of our other students, which is really bad. We are trying to get something in place for next year if we ever get back to normality, but you know, it's like every time we try something or try to get something new going, something changes. Or, you know, we brought back the child study team from Riverside, you know, and tried to do it ourselves, and then the one lady that we had ended up leaving. You know, and we don't think.
And Phil, that that saves us a good amount of money by not outsourcing the child study team to Riverside, and having me oversee the process that the CST is taking uh with our students. So, you know, I I understand there are questions, I understand that there are comments about this topic. And you know, what I will say to the public is, our our local taxpayers have saved a tremendous amount of money by not having a separate special education administrator. That, I mean, that's important, that that's, that is very important for our budget and for our local taxpayers to not have a separate person that we're paying to oversee CST while I'm doing it. So again, and you know, that's not just to defend me, but we made that decision for a number of reasons. And and I think that that's uh important for everyone here to consider, and Mr. Masif, I appreciate what what you have to say about it, absolutely.
Right.
Now, that was, Joe, I I agree with what you were saying in that sense, and I I just kind of want to say, you know, that that obviously, smaller K to eight districts like Phil was mentioning, a lot of what you look for when you hire, not just chief school administrators, but any administrators, what other roles can they fill? And what other roles can they do? So that way, y- you're really kind of helping that K to eight district because they don't have the same type of uh, resources that others do. So I I understand that as an educator, so um, you know, thank you to the board and everybody for for looking into those possibilities.
You're you're very welcome, Eric, that's just some of the things.
Thank you.
We share our school business administrator with Moorestown. It gets us, saves us half the cost, even though she's getting a lot of gray hairs from some of these meetings. Um, we also share our IT with.
Yeah, sorry about that, Becky.
I mean, we do have a lot of ways that we're trying to save money, but it's it's just putting us more into a corner. I'll give you another example. We have two students in town who go to Katzenbach School for the deaf. If you're deaf, that's the place to go, because they teach you tremendous how to do a lot of things. That's something that I think the state should be picking up the whole cost on, but they're not. It comes back to us, including transportation. I think the state should take over transportation. We have buses. If you look at some of the buses going down the road, or when they used to go down the road, you'd see five kids on one bus, six kids on another bus on a, you know, fifty-four passenger bus. If the state took over the busing, it would save it tremendous. There has to be some way of, you know, every time we come up with something that's going to be a great idea and save us money, then the state comes by and they throw something else, another obstacle in front of us. It's, it's very infuriating because it just keeps, it's like a noose around our neck, which just keeps getting tighter, and it's it's killing the small districts, you know, and I I love the small districts. I think it's great that if you can have a chance for your child to go from kindergarten to high school in a district, or in this case, K through eight, and then go to Riverside or Cross or whichever way you want to go, I think it's great because the kids build some lifelong relationships. But it's just getting harder, and to the naysayers out there to think consolidation is the answer, consolidation really isn't going to save you a ton of money, because we have a superintendent that does a tremendous amount of things in this district. If you turn around, and I'll use the prime example of, you know, consolidation with Riverside, do you really think the superintendent Riverside would pick up Delanco for the same amount of money? You can bet your bottom dollar she wouldn't, she would want significantly more, plus she would probably want an assistant, which would cost us probably you know, double what we're paying now, and that superintendent would only do one thing. They would have to hire other people. So when people say, you know, consolidation's the answer, no, it isn't. The small districts work extremely well the way they are, but the state's got to stop pushing us into a corner. See, I got on my little rant again, I'm sorry about that. Do we have any more questions in the public? Alright, I don't think we have anything else right now. Uh, we do have to go into executive session to discuss, I believe it's um, confidential personnel matters and confidential legal matters. It is approximately eight nineteen, I will say we're probably going to be back about nine thirty, I would take a particular guess at, so if you, everybody wishes to hang around, we can come back at nine thirty or a little bit before, hopefully.
Albert, Albert's going to keep this uh public session open because we do have to come out of executive and then adjourn the meeting in public session.
Okay.
How do I do that in terms of like, um, I have to stop the Zoom meeting and then join?
Click on the other link.
Yeah, you'd leave it.
The other link, okay.
You leave this one and join the other.
Okay.
Now I need a motion to go into executive session.
Motion by Marissa.
Second by Cameron.
Second by Cameron. All in favor?
I.
Alright.
Okay, I'd like to take a quickie ten-minute break before we join back into the executive session, so that would put us at eight thirty, folks, okay?
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, bye-bye.
Okay, let's see how many participants we have back here.
Okay.
I think we've got everybody, okay, it was Lynn. Vince is almost here. Alright, folks, I'd like to uh, welcome everybody back to regular meeting again. Uh, is there anything else that needs to be discussed tonight? Well then, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Steven second.
Marissa with the motion and Steven.
Alright, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Close, the motion carries to the, to the uh public out there, thank you very much for attending, have a one. Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Thank you. Good night.